Constructed.
Correct.
That's, that's different.
That's a modular.
Okay.
Where, where it's going and it's sitting on a permanent foundation.
Yeah, okay.
And it's counted as real property. A manufactured home would be one that you have like a car title to. You have a title to it. That's the big difference.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're talking about with this, you know, having these sit on a permanent foundation or, or any type of foundation. The stands now, they could go and put it just on the ground. But I, I don't think, you know, a manufacturer is just gonna go and do something like that. They're gonna do it to their specs. They're gonna anchor it, anchor it down. So that's why I don't know if it's a, a big need, you know, for it, but it's something that we could eventually adjust.
Well, I, I agree with Bruce. I think you should have the same unit regulations for, you know, both types. There shouldn't be any, any difference, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't know why there, if it's just an oversight, you know, the regulations, but.
If that's the case, that can be corrected.
Yeah, right. We probably correct it maybe through the definitions. I'd have to go back and look at things again, but, you know. And, and mind you, this is, I think, just the, the first step, you know, amongst, you know, several discussions and certainly if, if the public would want to, you know, have any say so in this, there'll be opportunities for them, you know, to potentially comment on this as well, but.
It got my attention when we had this permitting process for the young lady, was it last month or two months ago? That she had a new home. She was gonna replace, replace an older home, which had been vacant, I think, for a while. But she was gonna put a, a new, uh, mobile home on there. And she mentioned about setting it on concrete blocks, which made my light bulb light up a little bit. Cause I just, I, I'm probably tilting at windmills here and probably something that is not a problem for anybody else. I've just always kinda considered that kind of looks to be incredibly temporary and rather unsightly. I just don't like them sitting on concrete blocks. They should be skirted around. That probably should reduce the visibility of the concrete blocks or eliminate it. But a lot of that skirting blows off in 10 years or somewhere down the road. And then you still see, still see these concrete blocks. I don't know if there's, point number one, I just think it's ugly. But that's one person's opinion. Secondly, I had some concerns about how permanent the base that is and how stable that is. I was hoping maybe Mr. Britton was here to give us a little engineering background. People do it and have been doing it, setting those mobile homes on concrete blocks for, ever since mobile homes existed, I suspect. But I just always kinda figure that in my soils, things sink, sink around and.
The ground moves.
Yeah, if you get rains and on my sandier soils, why stuff kinda sinks around, moves around and rains and dries. I'm just, I, I can't think that that's a real stable base for the, on which to set the home.
That's why I went by there because I wanted to see what, what it is.
So I don't know how.
But probably eight, maybe 10 sets. They were all in groups of two. It was either a group of a total of eight or maybe 10. And they, no indication other than whether another slab of concrete underneath those concrete blocks or not.
It appears somebody was living there.
I misspoke a while ago, Russ.
It appeared it was occupied.
They had stairs on both the front door and the back door, so I'd say it probably is.
Stems going up, yeah. I misspoke a while ago. I, I would prefer to see them sitting on a little foundation strip, maybe a six inch wide stem wall essentially, two, two, um, parallel, parallel strips to replace the cinder blocks or the cement blocks and just set it down. That would be much more expensive, but it'd be much more permanent and, and I think more stable than, than just sitting it on them 25 or 35 or 40 blocks, but.
But I don't know how you'd do it.
Underneath her.
Because.
Well, you can't.
You gotta back, you gotta back it in and take the wheels off if that stem wall would be in the way, you know. Now, the concrete runners or whatever we wanna call them, so that, you know, if they were poured level and everything and then you set the blocks on top of them, that sounds pretty stable. Just sticking them on top of the dirt doesn't.
For clarification, that one that we approved two months ago and it's now out there and it's set down, is that a, that's not a mobile home, not a trailer house? Is it a modular home?
I think we're always getting hung up in the definitions. I was assuming that was gonna be a trailer.
Yes. Yeah, it's a manufacturer.
Pulled it in and set it down there and.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe I, my perception is that it was hauled in on a special truck and just slid off onto these concrete blocks with no, no wheels under it at all. And if you look at the definitions, we're talking about manufactured homes, we're talking about backstreet home, mobile homes and modular homes. I'm now confused. That one out there is it a, is it a trailer house or is it a modular home?
I would call it a trailer. It's a manufactured, it's a manufactured house, cause it'll have a, a title to it. And.
And so.
And not be like, it'd be like, it'd be like personal property.
This 129.
Yes.
That's a manufactured.
Cause it is constructed after 1994. Your, your modulators are like what Steve was talking about, where they're constructed offsite, hauled in in multiple pieces.
It's like a real house. It's just not built on site.
The biggest difference is it's built on a permanent foundation, a permanent concrete foundation.
What's the difference between a manufactured home and a mobile home?
The date. Before 1994, it's considered a mobile home.
So when you look at these, on page three, under Article 15, you've got 41 and 42. And you've got all the details under 42 and nothing under 41. So if we just added a little bit under 41 as far as the type of foundation or how you secure it or, uh, skirting, that might be a useful thing. Cause basically you don't, it, it look, just looks like we're missing something there.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. And I don't know what the thinking was when we did the, am I just, we just didn't look at it? You know, at, at that point in time. I'd probably look at the, the definition section and maybe add that as something under the skirting and/or the pad and then put that under Article 15, whatever we.
What's in here that we wouldn't want an individual?
Well, there's a lot under the mo, under the manufactured home park that describes the park itself.
Right.
You don't need that, but if you just pull out the pieces specific to a house, you'd be okay.
Get paragraph three, manufacturer home pad.
Yeah.
Pull that forward.
With the setbacks and the block size requirement and the skirting, I would think all of those would be.
Yeah, but it makes sense to put.
Well, the setbacks, I would say no, because you, you're talking about multiple manufactured homes in a, a park. So you would wanna maybe have a reduced setback for that because you're just talking about a, a finite area. The setbacks would probably, would remain the same, cause it'd be depending on what the zoning district is that the parcel is under.
That's already dealt with elsewhere.
Yes, yes. But yeah.
What's the, sorry, let's just say we, we, uh, just for argument's sake here, for discussion's sake, we say, okay, they need to be on runners and they need to have a certain scurrying. What kind of impact does that have on you as far as, uh, as far as, uh, the applicants following, following the rules? Compliance, that's the word I was looking for.
Yeah, well, I, I think if we add specifics, uh, it's gonna have to be something that's kinda verified by, by staff here that they're, that they're doing that. You know, and I, I kind of alluded to that a little bit. You know, we don't have building codes in the, in the county. So, you know, anybody could just pour any kind of concrete runner. I have no way of knowing, you know, the stability of that, you know, is it, is it, is it poured right or anything? You know, the skirting, I think, you know, if we do something like that, we'd have to get really specific on what we mean by that. Cause anybody could just go and hammer up any old kind of corrugated metal that they find, you know, anywhere. So, so that's my concern a little bit on that end.
Would it be the same as, as what we ask for the, for the mobile home park or manufactured home park? It'd be the same. We don't, we don't have a lot of.
Yeah, there's not a lot.
You're not checking on that either, so.
No, well, we don't have one, but yeah, I mean, it, it, it's been a while since I read it. But, you know, we'd have to make sure that they're in compliance with that. And so, so there would be, there would have to be some follow-up, probably especially on to make sure that they're doing it. Like with any kind of conditional use permit that we do, we have to follow up, make sure that the conditions of approval are, are being followed.
You touched on it just briefly where I was headed with it. How do we, how do we know they aren't just pouring a, a three inch slab? And, and to be honest, that isn't an anchor.
Yeah.
That's basically just a runway to get the wheels on the, on the ground and get some, and get some blocks laid on a nice area.
Yeah.
I mean, how, how do we, if we, if we do require it, do we need to go to that next step and say, define, okay, these runways need to be X-thick and need to have anchor points every X-feet and so on? Do we, I mean, how, where, where do we need, how deep in the weeds do we really wanna get?
Right. And see, that was my concern. It's like, ah, you know, I'm not a building official. I don't have that expertise. And who am I to say how, how it has to be, you know, spread out?
I was assuming when they build these mobile homes, you know, and bought it, or whatever manufactured homes, whatever you wanna call them, that there is some provision to anchor those built into the homes. And there's, so there's a, a specific spacing or, or so many anchor points within each one. Because, you know, it's, it's, you know, anybody in their right mind, if they're gonna put a mobile home on a lot, they gotta anchor it.
Yeah.
The wind blows in Kansas, you know, you know.
Yeah, sleep in a camper overnight.
I've got my, my pigeon coop anchored down. My wife's greenhouse is anchored down.
Tornadoes don't just hit mobile homes.
Yeah, they're, they seem to be inclined to do that, but.
Well, it seems like if you would just at least say, we expect skirting and we expect it to be anchored and we expect some kind of a foundation.
And then, and then the responsibility.
It's up to them. That's the responsibility.
Cause we don't go into that detail for, for parks, which would be more concerned than an individual. I mean, I just, I think.
Like the parks kinda govern themselves in that regard, that they have those requirements from a setting standpoint. But, you know, from a economic standpoint, why wouldn't you wanna put skirting or something down there to protect the pipes and everything else that run under one of those things?
Attract the next tenant for.
And the skunks.
You're, you're right, Steve. I mean, I didn't put it in my report, but yeah, the, the research that I did, I mean, everything I see, every type of foundation, whether it be cinder block or the runners, there's always anchor points for those to be anchored down in the manufacturer or, or the installer in the manufactured home, you know, does that. So it's not just sitting on the ground. It's not just sitting on the lawn.
Some guidance is what they would recommend is a, a satisfactory anchor point. Whether you're gonna put a cement tube down in the ground, three feet or four feet or whatever, with an eye bolt coming out of it or what.
I would think the dealer would have a responsibility for setting it the first time, but no one's responsible for the second time.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that, that's a question I have. You said that you've dealt with three or four that were replacing ones that were in place already, so they don't have to go through this process. Would they be grandfathered?
Yes, yes, they were. Yeah, I think I had that included in, at the end, that, you know, if, like in the, the reason we did the conditional use permit a few months ago is because she had one on the property. She pulled it off and it was.
Too long a time.
Too long a time. So you lose your, your grandfather status as well. Likewise, it's also in the regulations that if it's, uh, six months, uh, if it's vacant for like six months or more, then you're gonna lose it too. If you didn't have a previous conditional use or what we called special use permit on the property. You know, we did a lot of special use permits back in the early 2000s, you know, for these. And so there could be situations where if you had that, that's fine. The best case scenario is that you're still living in it. You come in, you wanna replace it. All you have to have is a 1994 newer. You pull the old one off, put the new one on, you're good to go and not going through that. And I've told people that. I say, you know, if you have aspirations of, of doing that, then don't just tear it off and like, oh, I'll replace it, you know, next year, you know. Leave it on there and be living in it. Or you're going through the conditional use permit process.
It would seem like if you would just bring us back a text amendment that adds the things that are appropriate under the manufactured home park and put them under the individual manufactured home section, that that would be an appropriate change.
But uniformly applicable. Okay, I agree. I can do that sometime. Procs and win. But, you know, I just, I had a little bit of a window of opportunity, so that's why I wanted to get these two things going. So, yeah, okay, I can do that. And then we can open up for discussion and everything and see what you guys think. And then at some point, we can set a public hearing date, if that's the consensus of the board.
We're needing any action on that other than just a suggestion, Mark.
The motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I would request that we, that you create a text amendment with those changes for us to review.
Second.
Then move to the second. Any discussion? Staff call rule?
Martin?
Yes.
Seltzer?
Yes.
Macklin?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Gerson?
Yes.
Next item of business is, uh, something similar, discussion of possible action.
Could I stop just now? I wanna make sure I understand something. I'm reading this section on security.
Okay.
And it says here, uh, security is a durable time material construction shall be installed on each manufactured home to enclose the open state between the bottom of the manufactured home floor and the grade level of the manufactured home pad. Such skirting shall be constructed in a material consistent. But, but it sounds like that this is intended to have some sort of a manufactured home pad. The skirting goes from the bottom of the modular home down to a pad.
The pads in, in paragraph three up there, but.
But if there is no pad, it would just sit on cement block.
Pad will be a general, general term that says you got a level, level dirt surface that you have installed on.
Is that defined in here? Is that something Mark's working on?
That's something that I.
Part of the text amendment, okay.
It does, uh, under the pad, it does ask for concrete runners. Is that what we want?
But that's if someone's putting in a mobile home park.
Yeah.
They have to provide those runners.
Do we wanna say that for individual one or?
Well, it'd be a good idea. I think that's something we can say for future discussions on what you guys wanna do. Maybe check with some other counties and see what they do when it's individual. Yeah. So we. See, see if they all hang up on you. Say mobile home.
Oh, my gosh. Why would you go down that rabbit hole, huh?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll do that. I'll bring something back to you guys in the future.
I guess the thing that's keeping in mind, it comes through my mind is I could see some skirting here that would be enticing to varmints, skunks and otherwise, digging a hole and getting underneath there, underneath the skirting. But if you read this language here about the grade level of the manufactured home pad, manufactured home floor to the grade level of the manufactured home pad, and I don't think this, this modular home that we're just talking about, I don't think there's gonna be any pad underneath the walls. It's just gonna be a skirting down there and it will be, uh, easily to entice raccoons, skunks.
Some people just use A bales.
Yep. Thinking about a bunch of straw bales and.
Yes, it is.
And if that skirting just comes to the grade level, pretty easy to dig a little hole in it.
I mean, how are you gonna, that's sort of going down some, some surface, you know, six, eight inches to try to, you know, block the varmints out.
I think with Mark, what Mark brings back, and if we, if, if the runners is part of the piece that we wanna, that we wanna include, then those runners could be that pad that you're talking about, Harley, that this, that this skirting could come up to. We, we can discuss that when, when Mark comes back.
I realize we're not trying to solve all the problems. We're just trying to get all the problems on the table.
You know, I, I'm, I'm, me too. I'd like to keep varmints out from, out from my house. And I, I've stuffed steel wool in places that I'd never thought I could get, get, that mice could get in, but they can.
They still do.
And so, and they still do. So I, I, I agree with you, Harley. There needs to be something, but we'll, we'll see what.
Is it possible to strengthen or upgrade the language regarding skirting to make it a more, to stress the fact that it should be permanent? I, you drive through the, here and there and you see a lot of that skirting that rattles and shakes and blows off and comes loose after a while and is not really, I guess it's up to the homeowner to keep that in place, but.
Yeah.
If we could stress somehow that that needs to be a permanent.
I don't know that we can mandate.
And I don't know that we can inspect it.
I don't know that we can mandate ownership pride. That's, that's, that's a piece of that puzzle.
I get it, but, yeah, like you say, I mean, that's more, you're getting kind of into the realm of building codes and.
Right.
And we don't have the staff to go around and inspect all, all of that. I mean, I think we can mandate that it's on there when it's installed and then.
The nature of the BCS are designed to be movable homes, so it's not gonna be a permanent structure anyway.
You still have to have access to underneath, cause that's where a lot of the piping is. And so it can't just be, you know, permanently attached like that where you'll never be able to get underneath there.
Roll space.
Yeah, they gotta be able to get down there with their heat gun and thaw their pipes out.
Well, I can, I can look at something similar to other text amendments that we've done and get a starting point and then we can kinda go from there. I say, I don't, you know, I don't think there's a big hurry right now. I've done, we've done one conditional use in, in five years. I, I think people are, are leaning more towards your, your shed homes and, and, and modulators right now.
Yeah, and maybe we can't, maybe we can't have much of an impact if we're only doing one or two here and there. Now, the last time I was on this board, we did them every meeting and it just.
Yeah, I bet you did.
Thick and fast. I, I did hear something today though, that the inventory of stick-built homes for sale in Hutchinson is the lowest it has ever been, cause housing is hot right now, in case you weren't aware of that. So they, they, so maybe there'll be more, maybe there'll be more mobiles and modulators put in, uh, if there's no homes for sale. I don't know.
You look at the, the price of lumber for the construction of new homes is, is ridiculous.
All right. Great discussion. We'll move on to the next item. Item, uh, item B on our, on our agenda. Uh, discussion, possible action on providing staff guidance on potential text amendment to Article 15-109 and Article 17-104 of the zoning regulations related to the 2,000 square foot maximum square footage of accessory buildings permitted by, on residentially owned parcels. Kinda hits near and dear to our heart. We just approved one here in the BZA.
Yeah. So as I stated in the report, uh, this doesn't apply to parcel zone agricultural. It just applies to our residential and, and village district. And village district is like Yoder area and the Dora. Those are really the only two areas that are zoned village. Um, in the report, you know, I, I give the board several different scenarios, several different options to choose from. By no means do you have to depict one of those. You can choose to do nothing. You can choose to leave it alone. You can do something, you know, in between. Uh, I just tried to think of about every type of situation that we could possibly, uh, do with that. I get that last meeting, you know, I was asked to provide a, a case history of everything. And so that's what the spreadsheet that you see here is. The two-page, back-to-back spreadsheet will, uh, list every single special exception that this board's done since the inception of the regulations in 2016. And in the bottom left-hand corner of each page, I, I broke it down into the acreages. I thought, you know, that that might be helpful for the board instead of just listing every single one of them randomly as they, they come up. So I wanted to kinda divide it into five acre, you know, increments. And so on, like I say, on page one, you'll see all the ones we've done for parcels between one and five acres and then six and 10, 11 and 20, and then 20 and up, up until you get to the 40 acre maximum. So you see the majority of them, surprisingly, uh, have been done in the, uh, the one to five acre range. Uh, I wasn't sure on that, so we actually laid, uh, while I was out here, I thought maybe we had done more in the 11 to 20 range, but, uh, not according to the statistics that we have here, so.
Our current regulations, do they, are there any issue there or do they deal with the height of the structure?
Yeah, it does. Yeah, we have height maximums in the residential, 35 feet.
Okay, maximum 35 feet. Is that sidewall, you mean, or, or roof peak?
Roof, peak, peak. So.
So, so my observation is we've got, we've had 40 of these and not turned down one of them. I, I think we need to change this. I, I mean, I kinda like Hutchinson's approach. I, I did a percentage of coverage of every one of these. And, and the highest percentage of coverage of one of these sheds was the one acre parcel and it covered 7% of the, of the ground, which is well below the 35%. Now Hutchinson's is backyard, so.
Yeah.
If you assume that the backyard is 40% of a parcel, I just drew that out of nowhere. But then that one acre shed covered 17.6% of the, of the square footage, which is half of what Hutchinson allows. I think we're forcing people to spend a lot of money, a lot of time. We're spending a lot of staff time for not a lot of purpose.
Yep.
When you look at the, you look at the, Mark's chart, the size of the structures, I mean, 40 by 60 is, is fairly common and take, I mean, it covers probably 80, 89% of all of these, size-wise. So, I mean, if we just, if we look at increasing it to something like that even, I mean, that's gonna eliminate, you know, bulk of these, these cases. And as Bruce has said, from the standpoint of the square footage of, of the parcel, it's insignificant. The only thing you're, you're dealing with possibly is the placement on the parcel and, you know, adjoining properties.
And that can be articulated at the, at the permitting stage.
Yeah.
Setbacks and whatnot, yeah.
I looked at the, the little example that you gave of regulations on square footage based on the size of the parcel. And really the ones where it affected were those that were, you know, less than five acres. Those are the ones we would review. And those are probably the ones that would be more likely that there's gonna be somebody right next door. Not always, though, sometimes.
Not always.
Often they're just on, on their own somewhere. But once you got to those bigger parcels, there was, there was only one in there that, that didn't fit in your little example that you gave.
Yeah.
So I could see something like what Bruce suggested, a percentage or, or go on with your example and, and we just review those small ones just to make sure they're not, um.
With doing the, with doing the small ones, it's like residential subdivision, you can kinda understand that. But then there's still a lot of tracts out there that are three acres or less that are, you know, an agricultural lot split or just a, a tract that was created many years ago. And so then you're gonna have a situation where they've got, you know, two acres of land and they're gonna go through this process and all around them is.
Nothing.
Is 2,000 acres of, of ag land. But, you know, the regulations, you can't fit every single scenario possible. So somebody unfortunately may have to go through a, a process, but.
Help, help me understand. All right, I have a house. I have 10 acres. I'm gonna build a, a 40 by 50 shed, okay? So that's that 2,000 threshold. I don't, all I need to do is help me out with that process. And now the way I understand it is I come to you and get a, get a, uh, bill, a permit. Correct?
For.
To build the building.
To build, to build the building, after you have the special exception approved.
Well, as I mentioned, all I have, all I have is a house and that is the only accessory building.
Cash garage or anything. I was assuming, yeah, you had another one. So if that's the only one you have on, then, then yeah, you get a permit.
So we come in, an applicant, I'm gonna use me as an example. Me being the applicant would come to see you. And then you would, then within that application process, it would go through this, basically the same thing we see in our packets. That, that goes to the health department. It goes to all those, it, it hits all those wickets to make sure they're not, they're gonna be okay with their septic system. They're gonna be okay with their well, all of that.
So he wants to put up a building that is within the, the 2,000 square foot.
Right.
Parameters. He doesn't need to do anything, does he?
Yeah, it's a permit and then it goes also to the health department for review.
Okay.
And then after I get their information back and they're okay with it, then we issue the permit.
So what we see in our, and so what we see in our packet is, is a typical, typical permit application that you see and grant probably within the, within the realm of your ability.
Yes.
Regularly.
Yeah, you'll see the site plan.
Yeah.
They'll have the site plan developed. I mean, they have to do everything. They'll have the site plan developed, I mean, they have to do everything for me to get a permit for a.
I just want to make sure we're not going to do anything that's going to, that's going to.
So basically the.
Sidetrack that.
That's going to sidetrack that process.
They, what you see on a, on a, a less than two thousand square foot accessory structure is the same thing we see for those that are over it.
Yes, exactly.
And still doing the same process. Except they don't show me house and shed location versus property lines, septic system, well.
Yeah, just want to make sure we're not derailing anything.
Yeah, we don't want to put you out of the job.
Right. Don't have to worry about that, I think, but yeah, so yeah, it's the same, same thing. The health department's still going to review it and everything for, for compliance with sanitation code and then once that's back, then I'm issuing the permit and then they're free to build it however they want.
Is the city's process similar?
Uh, I don't know.
Harley probably know.
Hundred percent. I mean, they have to have a site plan, they have to apply for the building permit. The only difference is they'll have building codes and so there'll be inspections of that, but other than that, that factor is probably, is pretty similar. I mean, they still have to show the building and where, where it is on the property and then the setbacks and then.
Unless it's over thirty-five percent of the backyard, they don't have to go before the planning commission.
Yeah, that's, yeah. But, you know, you think about, you know, I, I like that concept a little bit here, but in the city, you know, I don't know how they came up with that number, just like, you know, you kind of wonder how we came up with the number of two thousand, you know, square feet. So I don't know how they, they came up with that number. And then a lot of the parcels, obviously in the city are going to be smaller, so you can get thirty-five percent of your backyard pretty darn quick.
Well, I was on the planning commission then.
Yeah, do you?
Lots of arguing.
With that?
Because there were, and Harley was too. Were you on there when we did the zoning last time?
Yeah.
Were you?
You know, because there were a couple anti-garage people.
Yeah.
Couple pro-garage people. We had meetings and meetings and meetings over that and I think the thirty-five percent just kind of where the dart landed.
Just, just something the consultant suggested, kind of like with ours, I think. I can remember our consultant suggesting twelve hundred and, you know, loads of us on the planning, which I don't care when you're there or you weren't there when we did the regs. So just you and me and we sent out and I, I can remember just us looking at that like, ah, that seems pretty, pretty small and so we just upped it to two thousand for that.
So in these, in these rural residential areas, typically the lots would be at least half acre, wouldn't they?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, because I mean.
It would, it would be, yeah, I would think it would be.
Well, if you're like well, septic and everything, you've got to have spacing.
I'm just talking maybe on an average. So, I mean, that's twenty-two thousand square feet.
Right.
I mean, a two thousand square foot shed is still only ten percent of the total space.
Exactly, total, total.
Yeah, I, I just, it just seems to me we're, we're buying a lot of work and a lot of hassle for homeowners.
Think about how many meetings we would not have had to have had in the last three or four years.
There would be people who would be shocked to hear me saying we need less regulation. I think we need a little less regulation.
Do we need to get it medicated for you first?
Well, if you were actually denying some of these, it would be something.
Right, I mean, we're forty out of forty, we have a, you know.
We have a pretty, pretty good tracker.
Yeah, I think the first one that we looked at, we, we might have considered some regulations on that just because it was really big and it was in a subdivision, but we, at that point it was kind of like, I don't know.
But all the ones we've had have been on rather fairly large-sized acreages. Now, we could still have somebody come in with a half acre lot or a one acre lot and there might be a pond in there somewhere.
Right, yeah.
That takes up a fourth of their, a fourth of their square footage as well, so.
Or it's situated in such a way that it's going to be blocking somebody's view out their front door, you know.
We, you know, we, we, you know, we heard of a, a personal use building. What about, I think in the last year we heard from Yoder Metals a couple different times. Okay, that's an industrial building, that's a business, that's, now do we need to, do we need to draw a line somewhere there where is it, if it's going to be a business or it's going to be personal use, how do we, how do we differentiate there?
There is a difference, isn't there?
Yeah, well, you know.
I mean, how, how could we make your job easier? Is, is, I mean, I could build a twenty by twenty garage and I could be having, I could have a personal, I could have a business in there, but I'd still, all right, I'm using me as an example, I've already exceeded a two thousand square feet accessory, accessory buildings because I've got a barn, a pool shed and a machine shed and all that on there and I want to build a twenty by twenty.
For a business.
For a business, then I would, in my, with that example, I would hope I, as a board, we'd want to see that and say, okay, that business is appropriate for the, you know, go through all the conditional use, the, the, the golden rules and make sure that we're doing what we're doing. But if it was a twenty by twenty garage that I'm putting in to put a couple of my old antique cars or trackers in, let, let you approve the golden rules, rubber stamp it and say, Godspeed.
Is there any, any, anything in the current regulations that differentiates between residential and commercial use?
The conditional use permit process.
Okay.
So, so here's twenty by twenty building that he's going to run.
So he just wants to put a twenty by twenty foot building up. He doesn't say, doesn't say he's going to do, use it for business, he can do it with just the permitting.
With a conditional use permit.
Okay.
And not a special exception because he's doing a commercial activity.
Does that apply to under two thousand square foot?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Any commercial activity.
Okay, so there's no difference.
Gotcha.
So that will come to us.
That comes to us anyway.
Commercial activity, you're going to park, you're going to signage.
Yeah, yeah.
So if it's a twenty by twenty building, he's over the two thousand square foot and it's for residential, then it's a special exception. And so then he's going through that process.
So the guy who's going to lie about whether they're putting a business in it or not is going to lie no matter what size it is.
Yeah.
We're going to follow up a couple.
Where does the home occupation deal come in?
Well, home occupations, you can do home occupation, you know, by right, you know, and doesn't need that conditional use permit so long as you don't go over that threshold.
I mean, if a, if a plumber wants to park his van in his garage and, you know, he may have some supplies and stuff, but no one from, no one ever comes to his place of business. He always goes to them. Is that a home occupation?
That'd be a home occupation.
If it's just him, now if you've got a whole fleet of cars.
Yeah.
Out there and a whole shop building full of supplies.
Yes.
That exceeds the home occupation standard and so that would be a conditional use permit. But yeah, if it's, if it's one individual plumber that has one van and he's got a corner of his building for supplies or what have you, then that's just a home occupation. And so. You know, the, the lot coverage, you know, it could work, it'd be a little bit, it might be all right, you know, I guess just, if you do happen to exceed that for whatever reason, then we're going through a special exception and then again, what are we reviewing? You know, if, if you have a situation where you're going to exceed whatever our percentage is, then is that something this board wants to review? I mean, there's no sense in making the percentage so high that nobody's ever going to really exceed it, so if you're going to do that, then let's just go ahead and eliminate the regulation. We saw a good example here this evening where there was, somebody that was in the notification circle, didn't quite understand what that was all about.
Right.
Well, how are we going to educate all, I'm just going to use all as a big term here, this percentage piece? That's good, that's a, that's a big hill to climb. I mean, for a landowner, for me, I could, I, I can calculate that pretty darn quick.
Yeah.
But my neighbor might not understand it, is what I'm getting at. So I, I want to, okay, in, in, in a previous long marathon of public hearings you had a couple of years ago, it's terribly difficult to be simple. So.
We, we need to, we need to have a, we need to simplify your life alongside with simplifying the applicant's life and not having to go through, well now with the, with the county commission meetings every other week, they, we are, they aren't seeing these and the, the time span that, or the, the duration that an applicant could see be extended by X amount of days, so let's, let's make everybody's job a little bit easier. So, you know, I mean, I'm still dealing with the, the exercise facility that we approved in April. It was just approved in May and then next Tuesday they're going to sign the resolution and then after that, then I have to publish that and so it's still going to be into June before that's really officially approved. But you've got to remember, special exceptions don't go to the board.
I, 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 I'm, I'm with Bruce, I like the percentage because then, then we can, it, it applies to a subdivision, it applies to a small parcel, where, you know, we could apply it and then we have the opportunity to deviate from that if we need to. That's a slippery slope, slippery statement that I just, that I just said because then we could be right back in approving every, every application that comes through, but at least it would give staff the opportunity to, to say, okay, you're under your, you know, whatever number we come up with, if it's thirty-five percent, whether it's twenty-five percent, whatever that number is, it gives you the, the power of the pen that says, okay, basically, you've got the acreages, you've got the parcel size right there in front of you, you can say, okay, you're going to be putting up X sized building. Boom, you got it here, let's, let's put it through the motions, done. Thank you very much for your time.
Is it, is it simpler to do it on a percentage basis or using that little chart that you gave us an example where it's a certain size shed is okay on a certain number of acres? I mean, it's kind of the same thing, but is one of them simpler than the other?
The application.
To me, I think it's going to be simpler to have, you're allowed so many, so much square footage per your acreage. The percentage, I think, could work, but I think we need to really get specific and define what that is. Is it a percentage of the whole entire parcel? Is it a percentage of the backyard? And if it is the backyard, what is the backyard mean? You know, the, the issue, because, and I'll tell you, you know, Bruce and some of you might remember, you know, we had a regulation that, that said that you could not build a shed, you know, in front of your house, okay? So you had a situation where you had five acres even and you had your house way in the back as you went, way off the road. Well, everything in front of the house is considered your front yard and so you could have a situation, you have five acres and then you have a very tiny backyard and so now somebody wants to put in a twenty by twenty shed and maybe it doesn't meet that, that percentage that we have. And so I would worry about that a little bit. Now that regulation's gone.
Yeah, the backyard doesn't work in the county, probably.
And I, I think, I think I agree with Lisa, your, your chart idea, I think that would work, I think you could probably simplify it somewhat, we don't have quite the number of.
One to five acres.
Layers, yeah, one to five, you know, five to ten, you know, ten to twenty or whatever, something like that. And, you know, you know, something like that, I mean, you look at a, you know, most of the, most of the, you look at through your chart you gave us for the special exceptions and the majority of those, you know, forty cases, probably thirty, thirty-five of them were all less than a sixty by forty foot building or at that. You know, there were very few where you look at the square footage that actually exceeded that sixty by forty.
So, yeah, I didn't, I didn't break it down into size of shed, I mean, but there's, I mean, we've approved some big buildings.
Oh, yeah.
Now, those big buildings have gone on big lots.
Yes.
You know, too.
Yes.
So, and there's been no issues at all with setbacks really, I don't think on, on any of them.
You know, going with the concept of a chart type thing, then, I don't know if you want to say, you know, ten or more, no limit, but, you know.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just, like you said, I just made that up.
Yeah, I understand.
Do some thinking on that more.
But, you know, I like that concept.
Thirty percent, thirty percent would have been over that, that forty by sixty.
Yeah.
So thirty percent of our cases were over that.
Yeah, yeah, so sixty percent, seventy percent, or a hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So that eliminates a lot of cases.
Yeah, but again, it'd be like if we did the percentage or we did my chart, it's like, is there a need to review something like that? If, if somebody is over their thirty-five percent or whatever, what, what are the issues that you want to review? Is it just the fact that it's a large building and we want to notify the, the neighbors or what is the, the concern? Because I think initially when we set this regulation up, it was for big buildings, let people know, hey, you know, that could just be put anywhere, but it was also to maybe put on record here that it's going to be just for residential purposes. A lot of times, you know, I would just issue a permit and all of a sudden that building turns into the plumbing shop, the electric shop, a business. But that can be fixed, that type of situation can easily be fixed on the zoning permit and, you know, I, I could, I could just ask the person, oh, applicant said this is going to be for residential purposes, so that's easily solvable in that and without having to go to a public hearing process.
And there's self-leasing to a certain extent, I mean, like this couple that, that wanted to put the restaurant, if you want to call it, into an existing ag building.
Right, right.
You know, of course to do that, they had to get the proper, you know, food permits and whatnot, which then kind of the chain let it back here to you.
Yeah, right, right.
I think the only ones that I've been concerned about would be when they're on, really surrounded by other houses and just make sure that they're not going to create a problem for their neighbors and so.
I think it's worked on lot size.
It kind of gets to those small parcels, yeah. And I, I know there are some that are out on forty acres that have, you know, a five acre lot and, but it's okay for us to review a few of those. So maybe you only have a square footage you're concerned about if they're less than five acres, I don't know, if they're three acres.
And I'd go, I'd go way less than three acres because, I mean, that's, that's two hundred thousand square feet plus.
So it, it looks like we've had, there've only been four that were less than two acres and maybe those would be the only ones we care about.
Whatever you do, you know, it's going to be hard to justify what that, that number is going to be, you know? If we do less, if we do two acres or less, somebody's going to have, you know, one point nine nine, you know, and, but that's just, that's just the way that it's going to be.
That's what it is, it is the best, I mean.
You know, but.
We got to draw the line somewhere.
I just think we have to be able to justify that, why did we say that number?
That's why we have a BZA.
Yeah, and it would cut down the number that you have to deal with, it would cut down the number of people that have to go through the process, it would cut down the number of hearings we have to have. If we just did anything less than two acres, we're going to review it.
Well, I think it would open up our time to, to look at other sections of the regulations. I mean, I think there's other things that we may want to tweak, you know, we have, you know, when we're, albeit fifteen minutes is still a meeting here, sometimes we have two or three of them, we've got to do all that and it just takes a, a lot of time, it takes a lot of my time, we had to prepare information for this board to be able to review and so.
So, so if we cut it off at two acres, we don't, we would only add four cases.
Yeah, since twenty sixteen.
Yeah, we would have cut ninety percent of our business, of our workout.
We could work on other things.
If we, if we did the, maybe this is just a suggestion, if we did the under two acres and two thousands, greater than two thousand square feet. That would be essentially what we have now with the, with the upper limit, I mean, with the limit on.
So if they're under, if the lot size is two acres or less, or under two acres and the proposed building is two thousand square feet, then it's got to be approved.
Then we're going to look at it and make sure that it's not an issue.
Yeah, I mean, that's not, that's not a bad compromise.
Is that cumulative or is that just for any building?
Yeah, I think. I, I keep it cumulative.
Yeah, I think you, you keep them as is so that you. But then you're going to have buildings that are twenty by, ten by twenty, twenty by twenty.
Yeah, yeah.
People are just squeaking it in, you know, and stuff, potentially.
And they can do that now.
Yeah, and still it would only be four cases in five years.
Until they get over that two thousand.
Until they get over that.
Yeah.
Right, right.
But I say, you know, then, then we're reviewing a ten by twenty building.
Oh, I see, I see.
You know, it's like, oh.
Well, I think that's.
If they got a forty by sixty, now they want a little twenty by twenty for their lawnmower and now we're reviewing a, a twenty by twenty or ten by twenty for that, that's the only thing.
But we're still doing, I mean, we're doing, we would, that case would come to us now.
Oh, yeah, you bet.
So we're not creating new work.
We're not creating new work, exactly, no.
We're just cutting out ninety percent of what we've been doing. We're just cutting out ninety percent of what we've been doing.
Can you, can you think of anything, Mark, I mean, on larger tracks, say, more than two acres, where it would be advantageous for some A structure to be brought to the board concerning, you know, location of, of placement on the lot or neighbors or anything like that?
How disadvantageous the neighbors somehow?
Yeah, I mean.
I'm going to throw something out there. We can discuss it. I'll clean it up as, after I've blurted it out. If we do, let's do, I'm, I'm with you on the two, on the two thousand square feet on two acres or less. And that, what, how you, how you stated, I'm with you there. What about, what about the big buildings? And we had a couple of big ones, sixty by a hundred and we had a, we had a eighty by, no, we had, we had a couple sixty by hundreds.
There's a sixty by a hundred, now we're on four and a half acres.
Then there's a sixty-four by eighty on nine. That, that doesn't bother me so much. But should we put a five thousand foot, five thousand square foot on anything above two acres that we need to review? Because I, I'm going to tell you, a five thousand square foot building screams commercial. Unless you have three RVs and then you're, then yet you're going to probably be storned for a buddy.
I don't know, some of these farmers have their fifty by a hundred foot buildings, they keep their equipment in.
But the ag doesn't, doesn't fall under this. I'm talking about residential, residential stuff.
Yeah, yeah, true.
I don't know. I, I just, I'm, I'm, there's something in the back of my mind that says we still need to be looking at that piece of that puzzle.
I could do that. You only have.
There's, there's not very many. There's five, six, seven, maybe.
That if we put that in there at a.
I don't think there are that many. Sixty by a hundred and a sixty by a hundred.
There's one. Then, let's use a five thousand foot. Five thousand square foot as the, as the floor. There's one, two or three. There are only two or three in there that's like that.
Yeah.
That'll cover that. I mean, it's, it, I don't know, I'm just, I'm think, I'm thinking of that, the, over on Beulah Road, we had that. That was one that is in here. That thing was huge.
Yeah.
And he had a trucking company, okay? He drove truck. Well, that big a building screams, okay, I'm going to have about three more trucks sitting there with trailers and whatnot and I'm going to, you know, I'm going to have an office there.
I hope not, yeah.
But you, you understand what I'm saying. That, that's the scenario that goes in my mind when you.
Unless you, unless you have, unless you have an extensive collection of cars. Now, if the Lotto ticket, Lotto ticket hits for me Saturday night, I'll probably be coming and putting a, putting a, I'll be, I'll be looking for a permit on Mark's desk and I'm going to be go to, go to Meacham's and I'm going to be buying cars. But, so I'm going to be needing a big building.
I got a couple. You don't have to go to Meacham. I got a couple that I can sell.
But you, you understand where I'm coming from there, you know, there's, there's, I think we need to, in that, in that regard, we at least need to have some.
Kind of another.
Kind of a review.
Kind of a review piece, yes.
But they already have to tell Mark they're not going to do commercial.
Right.
And the only thing we have is their honesty.
Yep, I get that.
So, I mean, if that guy lied to us, he lied to us and, you know, our neighbor's going to have to complain for us to file.
I think if there's, if there are, if there's, if there's two levels of their dishonesty, then they're going to be a dishonest person. If they're going to lie to Mark and then they're going to come stand at the podium and lie to us, then they're just going to, they're, those people just, we're going to meet them in a different place. But I think, I, I think if it gives them that next level and they understand that this is serious business, it gives them, not that I want to put teeth in, I'm not a mean guy, but it gives them, it gives a little bit of respect to the process in there. I don't know. I, I'm, I'm.
I object to that.
I'm trying to, I'm, I may, I may be trying to jam, you know, a square peg into a round hole, but I just think that there's some, there's some piece of that review.
I'm hearing you loud and clear. That is, that there ought to be a limit and that forces it to come to be reviewed. And I don't know what that is. I don't know whether it's ten thousand square feet.
I, I, I was just looking through this and as we were, as we were discussing, you know, the two, the two acre, the two acre piece, I, I'm with because that, that reduces the load tenfold, twentyfold, thirtyfold.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's incredible. It, it drags it down to, you know, minimal review for us. I'm just thinking of the upside, which would only, it would, we're not, we're already doing it.
Yeah.
So it would just, it would still minimize it, but it would give another layer of review, another set of eyeballs on it. You know, that kind of thing.
I don't object to that. I, I just think we have to recognize the limitation of, of our power.
Understand. I, I understand completely. I just think we, we, we owe it to ourselves and, and, Steve, if you were my neighbor and I didn't know you were putting up a hundred by a hundred and I live right across the fence from you, I'd. Of course, of course, if you, if you were my neighbor, I'd probably be over there saying, hey, can I borrow, can I borrow a corner of your building? But you, but you, you get what I'm, you get my point. There needs to be, there needs to be a piece of that.
Well, you suggested five thousand square feet. I, I'm, I'm coupled with that. Harley suggested ten, but.
Well, or even I suggested ten and that, that's just huge, big.
That's that one, yeah.
It probably ought to be less than that.
Yeah.
I like four thousand better.
There, there's a bunch of them that would fall into.
Then, then we start adding in. There's one, two.
There are quite a few there.
Uh, yeah, I, the five thousand would only add maybe, what, three or four cases based upon previous history. Four thousand would add another couple, three.
Couple or three, not many, yeah.
Maybe that's, yeah. Well, there's some kind of consensus on a number. I can just put something in and we can further discuss it, you know, while you can think about it, but. You look at, again, are you looking at just a single size shed or are you looking at the grand total of all?
I think it should be.
It should be cumulative, yeah.
Cumulative.
Yeah.
I mean, it might be just as irritating to have six buildings out there as one big one, yeah.
Yeah, two thousand cumulative on two acres or less and then, then.
Start with five thousand.
Start with five thousand.
Decide whether that's right or not.
Yeah.
Of course, that's, that's the thing. Mark's little chart doesn't really give us.
Yeah.
Is what kind of accessory structures were already there when they came to request these.
Spot on.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of them has a shed addition, a twenty by forty-five shed addition.
Kitchen, yeah.
How, how big, how big a shed are they, are they adding on to?
They're going to add on a chicken coop.
Chances are that was a forty-five foot deep building, but who knows how wide it was. I mean, it's, but you, yeah.
Well, the one that had a sixteen by thirty-two must have already had something pretty good.
Yes, yep, yep. I mean, there's, there, that's where.
Yeah.
That's where we, if we set that five thousand foot level, I think we could screen some of that stuff out. Because if they already have, all right, in my case, I've got a sixty by, a twenty-four by sixty pole shed, a thirty by thirty barn and a, and a forty by fifty machine shed. Okay, you know, I'm not going to do the math in a hurry here, but you know, we're talking, we're talking, we're talking five, yeah, in the, in the mid fours anyhow.
But aren't you agricultural?
No, I'm real residential, we're not. So if I, if I was, if I wanted to stay under that five thousand threshold, let's just say I had forty-five hundred square feet of accessory building, I could only build, build a five hundred foot, five hundred square foot building and still stay and, and not go through the hearing process.
Go and make another she shed for your wife.
Yeah, a she shed. I need, I need a me shed. My boys have taken over my machine shed, but that's all right. That's a good thing. But it, I guess I'm just trying to understand how that'll all apply for discussion sake later on.
I would see a, a pretty clear understanding and it's up to Mark to put some things in print and then we will.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll all check and, or we'll come up with a new, new thing that ought to be considered.
Yep, I agree. Two acres or less.
Keep the two thousand.
Keep the two thousand or so, okay. And then any parcel is a maximum of five thousand accessories, yes.
How would that work on your end? I mean, we don't need to dive in. We don't need to get granular here, but that's something you need to think about as, as you bring forth the, the proposal. I mean, we want to make sure that what we're doing isn't creating a, a.
Yeah, I'm just trying, yeah.
For you.
I mean, I'll, I'll have to write it out and kind of think about it and see how that would, if that makes sense.
So basically, for anything over two acres, two acres or larger, you're just going to be the same regulations we've got except you're substituting five thousand or two thousand.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, that.
Yeah, that's why I'm struggling.
Yeah, so it's the same regulation that we have. We're just, we're just dividing it. If you've got two acres or less, you're still going to be lower than two thousand. If you're two point oh one to three nine ninety-nine, then you're at five thousand.
You just simplified the whole damn thing.
Suzanne.
I could have did that earlier.
I'd go. You save us a lot of time. Just to grasp the facts.
My hamster wasn't moving my cages very fast either.
Yeah.
And I, I believe that once we see it in print, all of a sudden, what Ken said, he liked four thousand feet, just might just jump out at us and we'll stop at four thousand.
Yeah, give us, give us a starting point.
And there's no way from your records that you could go back and figure out what other accessory structures were on these properties? Probably not.
I mean, it would take a lot of work.
Yeah.
You'd have to do.
Even intern.
You'd have to use their auto.
Volunteer.
Volunteers or RSVP.
What are you doing, Steve? Yeah, so, I mean, you could, and that, while you brought up the point, that's what I was going to say. That if we're leaving the cumulative, and I'm not saying good or bad that we should, but, you know, that's, that's going to be a deal for some, I think. You know, I think we're still going to see those sixteen by thirty-twos and occasionally, you know, with that. If we leave, if we leave the cumulative.
We should.
It, it's, yes. That's fine. And that's fine, yeah.
I'm good with that.
Like the gentleman that was here tonight, you know, I can't, I don't know what he currently had on there with the existing barn and garage and the shed and whatnot, but, you know, you had all that.
Well, he's got, well, there you go. So he's one point two acres.
Yeah.
So I mean, he'd be under the two. So he would have to go through this.
It'd be the same, same place he was today.
So that, that already, is that a big deal or, you know?
It's a good deal. Because you, you look at.
No houses around that. You'd want to look at.
Yep, yep, you got that.
And that was their lot, but.
Yep, those aren't that, I mean, that's a, square footage, that's, that's where it lost, but it's long and narrow, too.
Right, right, the shape of it is.
And you've got neighbors.
Some concern.
It, it, it just, it's good to go through the hearing process on that, on, in that situation.
I'll get back to you.
Yeah, well, I'll, I promise at any time when, but I'll, um, he's your victim.
Both of these would require public hearings and.
Oh, yeah.
So would it make sense to try to do it all at the same time? I mean, probably.
Yeah, I mean, if I can get them both done, obviously it'd make, it'd make.
It probably delays us a little bit, but.
Yeah.
Seems to me that might be less work.
I mean, I would like to get, I'd like to get this done, the shed done first before I do the mobile home. But yeah, ideally, if I get the time, then we try and do them at both the same time.
You're right. The sheds has an immediate relief on you. The mobile home thing is.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah.
It's a nice day.
That's a good point, yeah.
My goal, Bruce, yeah, would be to do both hearings at the same time.
Yeah.
And everything, if we, if we can, but, um.
Well, if it was just more of a text amendment, it's not a, you know, a total rewrite.
Yeah, it's not a rewrite. And I'm not sure how involved is.
Making mobile home and manufactured homes same.
This may be an easier fix, an easier right. The manufactured home, you know, I think, like you say, you know, I think we need to really look at the definitions. I want it crystal clear of what is allowed, what's not allowed and, and stuff and.
When you do this one, just keep Steve's explanation in mind.
Well, yeah, yeah, because that was.
Change two thousand.
We threw your word, your word processor and replaced two thousand with five thousand.
Five thousand, yeah.
And then add a section for under two acres.
Yeah.
There you go. Yeah, that's, yeah, I mean, that, yeah, that's why I had to, I want to kind of get it alone and think about it, yeah, and that.
But that might take fifteen words to.
Because, yeah, we're really just adding the five thousand.
Yes.
Five thousand element potentially, that, so. Okay.
Good discussion. Glad we saved it for being face to face. That's awesome.
Yeah, that's right.
Zooming. But it just, it does provide dialogue, like face to face.
Comfortable to have discussions without being in public, too.
Yeah.
We are in a public hearing.
Don't tell me that.
It could be, but there are thousands of people up there watching.
Yeah, it could be.
Probably it's really popular.
Any other.
Give you a motion as such then on that?
My move, we have marked draft language to change the shed requirements to, as we discussed, you can fill them in.
Yeah. I'll second.
Moving second, any discussion? Staff, Colorado.
Martin.
Yes.
Seltzer. Macklin.
Yes.
You can.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
French. Gertsen.
Yes. Any other business before we move on? That?
No.
I don't have anything else. All entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Got it.
Move, second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.